Hello and good evening, everybody. This is the Wellington Board of Education Special Meeting. It is our budget workshop number one here on January seventeen, twenty twenty four. We are calling the meeting order at six oh two P M. We will begin our meeting with the pledge allegiance to these rights.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, the which stands, one nation, under God, in the name of God, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is. Our speakers will be recognized by the chairperson. Please identify yourself by name and address for the record. And your comments will need to be limited to a total of twenty minutes for everyone as per policy. Thank you. Does anyone in the room have anything to share? Okay, anybody online? Yes, awesome.
Probably one person, and she's probably just listening while she exercises, as I understand it.
Okay, go you. Get it on, all right. Then we will move on to agenda item number four, which is in regards to policy ninety one sixty, the Board of Education Student Representative Policy that we are at. We spoke about this at the last meeting, and we're going to get some more information so that we can make a decision about making this policy official. So what did you find out, Mr. Stevens?
I think we were just looking to give the time if there's any feedback. They're all set with on the admin side of what we talked about. And we can move quickly, so I don't think there was any other thing as far as the student reps go that I was supposed to collect. Correct? I think it was just feedback, and as long as we're good to go.
Okay, does anybody have anything they want to change and ask? Great, so then I think we're going to accept a motion to approve this. See if anybody would like to do that.
Make a motion of the Wellington Board of Education about policy ninety one sixty, Board of Education Student Representative Effect of one seventeen twenty twenty four.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, I think we need to do a roll call, right? Because we have still that on line. Okay, so Anne?
Yeah.
Arthur?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Samantha?
Yes.
Thank you. Hey, you're just coming in the door. I haven't heard you yet. Can you make a quick decision? Okay, baby.
Policy.
Would you say you're motioning?
All right, yeah, I made a motion of the Wellington Board of Education about policy ninety one sixty, Board of Education Student Representative Effect of one seventeen twenty twenty four.
Yes, thank you. If you'd mind to do that, as Daniel says. Okay, so that meeting has passed, and I'm looking forward to getting in that room. Thank you, Wellington, for starting the ball on that. Okay, moving on to the introduction of our superintendent's twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five's proposed spending plan.
All right, you ready? So this is, yeah, this is, this is, I think this will be relatively quick tonight. I'm gonna try and take the time to go through things, but if you have questions, just slow me down, especially if you've not experienced this process with me before. It's pretty straightforward, I think. First, this is a long process. This is your first night, but we've been at this, and they know I've been at this for a while, up to including today. It's long, it's intense, there's a lot of collaboration between staff and admin, Donna and myself. We go back and forth, so what you see, the polished piece in front of you, has already been just the way to get to where we are. And it's still a significant budget, especially for me. This will be on what you have in front of you, and I'm sure we'll find some more like punctuation things tonight. We're always finding things when you look at this for months. This will be on the website tomorrow. The proposal will be on for the public to see. So if somebody says, where can I get a copy of it? It will be, we have a section on the website that's just strictly budget, and it'll be right on there for people to see. So first task, I just want to walk through the document so you know what you have in front of you. Obviously, page two, and I'm actually gonna share my screen. Samantha, do you want me to share the screen, or do you have it in front of you?
I have it in front of me, it's on my phone, so I wouldn't have to.
This will make her life much easier, I think, and if anybody watches this. Okay, so table contents, all the items that are in the document. We have ten programs that are in the budget. This is, it's been that way since I've been here, or something that Dr. Jacoby started, because the budget process was a bunch of pie charts and really hard to follow, I think, in prior years. And we've kept it, and I think it's been clear for people to kind of see the process. So the things that are in here, you have enrollment information, you have program summaries, which is basically center hall and special education. There's also program summaries for the others that are at the bottom of the numbers on each page. There's staffing information in here, there's budget assumptions that we go through. So there's a lot of information, and you're gonna probably walk away tonight and have more questions at session two, because you're gonna digest it. And the idea is for me to introduce it and not just give it to you a thousand questions ahead of time. It's intentional. What do we tie our decisions to? This framework we talk about all the time, it's about student learning, it's about our beliefs, what we're trying to accomplish in Wellington, it's your board goals, it's the district framework. So when we tie dollars to something, we're tying it to this framework. We can tie it to one specific item on here that falls under your goals. We can tie any budget dollar to one of these items. So pretty specific, you know, the allocations that were there, they're in my proposed budget tied to this. Next, I'm gonna jump, I'm gonna ask you to go to page twenty five, just so you can see the appendix. So Lisa Cushing, Principal Center School, wrote the appendix A, which is kind of the instructional summary. Instead of just having a short paragraph under the key programs, and I call them key programs, because it's really the core, programs one, two, and three are center school, hall school, and special education. They write a larger piece, obviously, Dr. Conley, the Director of Instruction, has input on those documents. They put in their points of pride, they put in their goals, what they're, you know, trying to accomplish. And you can see center school's there, hall school's there, and then special education. The one thing that Marcia added, Marcia McGinnley, Director of Special Education, added in there. We have the, which I think is helpful for folks, just kind of definitions. What does a school psychologist do? What does a speech and language pathologist? So if you don't know, or someone of the public doesn't know, you can point them to this section of the document, and they'll have an idea. I'm not gonna go through all of the instructional summaries now. You can read them on your own, but I think in session two, if you have questions about it, specifically once you've seen the budget too, and you wanna know more, they will be here to answer questions, okay? Keep cranking? Okay, I'm gonna jump to page thirty three, which is where we spend all of our grants. It used to be grants and offsets, and notice now it's it's grants. So it's important for people to understand that we write grants and they offset our budget. Without these grants, your budget would be about six percent higher. And we write these, they've been written a certain way for many years. I continue to write them a certain way. So you have basically a lump of special education grants, and then you have a lump of general education grants. Notice that there's no more COVID grants in here. Esser, R Besser, Esser one. There was some special ed R Bessers in there, they're gone, dried up. They're going to be expiring of September thirtieth of twenty four. So the, these are basically the recurring grants that we apply for each year. So Marcia applies for special ed grants, I sign off on them. I D A B, that B grant, again, supplements our local dollars for things we do. You'll see where it's applied, typically it's applied to people, and we apply ninety two thousand to salaries. That's, and there's, I think there's also a portion of that is the preschool grant. That's still I D A part B, and that is a part of the preschool salary. We also apply some of it to purchase services. So you'll see these items at the bottom of each program. If there's a grant deduction, it's applied right there, and it matches these dollars. This is just a reference for you to go, what's he talking about when he says I D A part B? This is what it is. The excess cost grant, we'd be in big trouble without it. We get, we're expecting two hundred and eighty thousand next year. And that's basically when we are over four and a half times our per pupil expenditure, we get back a reimbursement from the state, and that's typically you're talking about a student who's outpaced. So if we were anything over about ninety thousand dollars, we start getting money back. Anything over that ninety thousand dollars. So we get about, we plan for between seventy and seventy five percent of that, those funds back. And that's what, based upon what we know today, as you know how volatile special ed is, what we know today, that's what we expect to get back based upon our current group of students, okay? The thing that, where it helps us is if somebody knew we're to move in, we're in health placement, that first ninety thousand is not budgeted. If someone were to leave, it is budgeted, but it doesn't hurt us, but we don't get the excess costs because they would have left, but we still have budget money there. So it's only when someone new comes in that it really is, what are we gonna do about this? How are we gonna figure this out? Because you would get additional excess costs. So if we had three more, just because that's just the way it seems like it's going, there would be excess, more excess costs coming, okay? So those are the special ed. The general ed grants, we have title one, two, four, and four. Title one is basically applied to two teachers, and there, it's, it is applied to everyone. It's an interventionist at both schools. And when I say applies to everyone, every student is eligible to receive intervention. So that's how we have to write that grant. So it's that, you'll see the title two offset, or title one offset, sorry, in programs one and programs two. The title two grant is for professional development. We apply that entire grant amount, as we do for most of our grants. That is a complete offset in program six. So we get a grant of around ten thousand three hundred ninety dollars. We then offset our budget completely, ten thousand three hundred ninety dollars for professional development. What I will tell you is that, is like, before I go into the REAP grant, I've always been very transparent about our grants. I don't have this pocket of other grants that were just, I can spend on things off to the side. Some superintendents choose to not put offset their budgets at all with grant money. I've always put it forward, and I almost use, I will say we use ninety nine percent of the funds on offsets. So I don't have additional grants just floating where it's like, you know, I could just pay for something. I've always considered the non-lapsing fund are, uh-oh, piece, right? And you know that. That's for hall school. And then the REAP grant is the real achievement grant. We, that is probably one of the most flexible grants I get. I could probably write anything I wanted there, and they would allow it as long as it was school-related. We tend to use that for technology. It is the only grant, I do not apply every dollar. So basically, when we talk about principal accounts, where they have a principal account of a couple thousand dollars that they can choose on how they wanna spend, something comes up, they get a speaker, they wanna use those funds. I have additional funds in REAP where something comes up, and I can use, there's like ten thousand typically in there. So we need a new subscription, and if it's not budgeted, I can use the rest of the REAP funds. A subscription comes in higher because we're budgeting in January. The subscription renewal is in January of twenty five, and it's higher than we budgeted. I can use the balance with the REAP, okay? So that's typically how I've used the REAP grant. Not every district gets a REAP grant, we do because we're small, okay? Questions about the grant page there? Sorry, I'm gonna be on fire, so I'm gonna keep snapping, just because this has been, go. All right, if you just look at the total at the bottom, the four hundred and eighty five thousand dollars in grants that we apply, I mean, without those grants, you would have a monstrous budget, it's just so much bigger, okay? Appendix E is on the next page, it's page thirty four. We started adding this in, I think it was the second year of my budget, because I thought, we thought it was really important to show you all the positions, what's it take to run a district? Now all of these folks are on our payroll, meaning we don't pay them through the Wellington Board of Education. M and J is on here, the bus company is on here. You could run a district, though, without bus drivers. So we put them in our total, so you can see the total on the bottom of that second page. One hundred and ten point three two five people to operate pre-K through eighth grade districts. And that includes general education, special education, business office. It goes through all those folks, okay? So to give you a sense now of what's in there, it's also important to know that we split some people apart by program. So if you look at, under district, where it says Administrative Assistant, Program nine point eight five, that's Brenda. Okay, that's my assistant, but point one five of her is also in transportation, because she does a lot with transportation. So a portion of her salary would be in Program four, the rest of her salary, the bulk of it, would be in Program nine. Jackie started that because she wanted to give people a sense that you can't just do a transportation program and not have a factor in that there's some human capital that you have to account for in that program. So there's a few of those. So if you look at Center Elementary School, the principal secretary, point nine is towards center school, but point one is in another program, Program four, transportation. So point three five overall staffing, you'll see in the transportation. We get to Program four tonight, you're gonna see point three five. It's not a solo position, it's people we already have, they're full-time, just a portion of their job is applied to that program, okay? The other thing that's important to see is when you see someone like in center school where it says point five math coach, that person is full-time, it's just that half of their time would be center school, half their time is at hall. So they're budgeted the same way. All right, so Program one, Program two, because there's part there for each person. Same thing with social worker, it's point seven five. The majority of social workers' time is at center school, but we have point two five at hall school, because if something comes up and we need somebody over there, they go. So it's just how we budget it. So when you go into the salaries for center, and we look at all the salary numbers, it only accounts for point seven five of that position. It's a little confusing, does it make sense? Okay, perfect. So to get to our total, you can see that center school forty point five five with all of our folks. You can see hall school when you scroll down, gets to forty five point four five. Typically, you see that middle school staff has more, when you maintain that middle school model, and you add in the counselor piece, it's typically where you get more. The other piece is when you add square footage, you add custodians. So that's typical, that you would see more. We also have food services in there, they're part of our staff, it's, you know, not part of our budget. But again, you would have to either contract out food, to buy food, to bring in, like in East Con, and they could serve your lunches, but you need to have a food program as your school. So we kind of backed them into, what's our overall staff count? The business offers, office is entirely shared, but we don't pay a dime. So when someone says, you have, I have my own business manager for a superintendent's office in another district, they, it's in their budget. We just use that in town here as the shared service. So I have access to all those people, they have board of ed responsibilities, but they're entirely on the budget of the town. And it's, I think, always been that way, it's just worked out, I guess. I T, we put in that we have one person a week, obviously, we have the army behind in Novus, but we do have one person on site. And then again, shared service between the town and us. Wherever the tickets are, is where they work. And then the transportation, you see the coordinator and the bus drivers. They're contracted, but again, you couldn't run the district without butter, unless you had a walking stool, which, you know, typical city, you know, that's not us. All right, questions about any of the staffing? This is the plan, and the number you see there is what we expect for next year. There are no new positions in this staff class. Okay? Appendix F is nothing new, it's just the, you know, we put in the C I P things that you approved, so those are there. And then Appendix G is new. This is something I hadn't done in the past, we talked about it, and I thought it was important, so I added this in. This is a historical, it's a five-year historical look back. With the approved budget, what the dollar increase was, the percentage increase. If there was a turnback, which has always been a turnback, and the turnback, if funds were transferred to the non-lapsing fund, which there have been in those four years. And then if there was money returned to the general fund, which there always has been. So the thing that's important is that, to walk through this. The first year, the nineteen twenty, where you see that four point six seven percent increase, this is my first year of budgeting. And it was high because we had planned for, we didn't have health insurance numbers early that year. We planned for a fourteen point five percent increase, because that's what they told us, we were gonna be the ballpark of. That's a huge amount of money. That was more like a two percent budget. Again, transparency, what did we do, though? We returned a bunch of money back. So nineteen twenty, again, was also part of the COVID closure, but we turned a bunch of money back. They gave us a hundred and seventy three thousand to put into our non-lapsing, and then they, they, I'm gonna say pocketed, put back into the general fund, two hundred and eighty five thousand after they'd already given us the non-lapse. The picture of this really is to give you a sense of, again, transparency. I've given you really, really tight budgets, year after year, based upon need. We have returned money, we haven't, we've been very open about spending at the end of the year, if we've done some spending. And we put that actually into our end-of-year budget reports, which you know we do. It'll say overrun because extra money was used for. We put that right into our budget report, so if someone ever says, I didn't know, they can see it on our budget reports, it's transparent. Obviously, the twenty four, twenty five approved budget for this year is not approved, that's just, you know, it's my budget request. It's a five point three seven percent increase. And I'm gonna be honest with you, it's high, but it's need-based, and I'm gonna get to that. I also thought it was important to put in the end-of-year turnback reasons in here. So nineteen twenty COVID year, we had extra money in health insurance. We had open certified positions, which we've had almost every single year I've been here. Science, Spanish, world language, math, special education, every single year, by Lisa. Every single year, we would have had an open position for some period of time, because it's a shortage area. But we have some really creative staffing that happens to fill those gaps without hurting those needs. And we've actually continued some of those practices. Marcia's got, instead of two speech pathologists, she has one, and then an assistant, basically. So paid as a parent. We're still meeting service hours, we're still meeting I E Ps, but there's a savings in it. It's not huge, but they're saving it, because it's very hard to find speech physicians to fill them. They're open constantly, all right? If Marcia left, you'd have a problem. Principals, sorry, we can typically find. But pupil service directors are shortage areas, they're hard to find. So there's, it's just important to understand that it wasn't that we didn't budget well, or that we didn't spend our money. It's that we weren't gonna go wild spending if we had savings in health insurance, because it wasn't put in the program, but if we had some need, we did spend some money, okay? I think that's just an important piece to look at as you, as you look at that appendix G. That sounds interesting. How are you? I was gonna say. Next, I'm gonna go to the enrollment, which is page nine. So this is our current enrollment, along with projections. And this is what we're using or use to build our budget for number of students, number of classrooms. So when you look at this, the number of twenty, the column that says twenty twenty three home rooms, that's current. The October one twenty twenty three is what we have to report always to the state. I always like to do the comparison of what we have now, so that one seventeen twenty four, I checked it again today. For both class size and enrollment, we currently have four hundred and two students who are outplaced, three hundred and ninety eight students on site, okay? The blue columns, proudest enrollment study, are, is that first column. I'm expecting the number of home rooms in the second column there. So what you see there is basically going through the, you know, elementary, middle school, so twenty six, it stays the same. And then class sizes are there. You know the hard one is kindergarten. We kept small this year. Our numbers are high for right now, for what we know, but it's hard to budget for something that you don't know. We probably won't know until June, really realistically, what our numbers will be. But we plan for thirty six, okay? The other piece of this on the next page is the twenty-year history. So we keep hovering around that four hundred number. It's just where we are, and, you know, it's, it's important to know what's where we were. We're down, you know, from that oh six, seven year, we're down a couple hundred students. So, but if you look at like where we've been level, we've been in that four hundred range now for, you know, they expected for around four years now. It drops a little next year, because we currently have a big eighth grade class.
It looks like a lot of kids didn't return after COVID.
No, they did, it's just movement. I would also look at this and go, the real estate market during this time has been wild. So we've seen people move in and out. You know, in Wellington, you get a family of three move out, and it looks like our enrollment dipped, because we're not huge. But it's been, it's been in and out, and it's been pretty consistent. And again, that's why I show this slide here, like you can see, some, there's been some move outs from October one. There was, where was it? It was, this first grade was forty four, now it's forty five. Kindergarten was thirty five, now it's thirty seven. But then you got the seventh grade went from forty four to forty three. So it's just, it bounces, but it's been pretty consistently around that four hundred number. And you're gonna hear some folks in the community say, well, but your per pupil expenditure just keeps going up. Well, you could add two hundred kids, and if they were distributed evenly across your entire pre-K through eighth grade population, you wouldn't have to hire a single teacher, and your per pupil would drop significantly. It's just the way it works in a small district. It's because you have the number you have. To really change that, you either have to go to one school, we all know where that landed, or number two, you have to change drastically your program. And I think your townsfolk would come out, like we talked about class sizes in the past years. Suddenly, these rooms are filled, and you're, you know, you have to move to a larger room, because people just want smaller class sizes, and it's desperate, it's what they've always wanted. So there's the enrollment projections, and again, the purpose of this is to show you, what am I pacing the budget on? All right, so I'm gonna go to page seven. Here's the big. So this is the snapshot, and I already found an error once I was sitting in here. It's supposed to say twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, not V O E approved budget, but it's supposed to say superintendent's proposed budget. So that is my proposed, it's a four hundred ninety one thousand, six hundred ninety one dollar increase, is a five point three seven percent increase. Now, what are the drivers? I will tell you, the good news in this is that we are very, very, very lucky that our health insurance this year is not going up significantly, or this budget would be astronomical. We have a zero, we have a flat health insurance budget right now, meaning there's no increase expected, and based upon what we had budgeted last year, we don't expect the number to change. So the number of people that left the district and took benefits, and the number that came in, it's just like status quo. So no change there, and the dental's a rate lock, so no increase there either. Where I'm crossing my fingers, and I don't have the information yet, the medical insurance is, there's rumor that we might have a slight decrease, because our usage has been outstanding. When your history is good, meaning you don't have numerous claims over a hundred thousand dollars per person, there's opportunity there, where, you know, Connecticut will say, you know, you're gonna actually come down some, we're gonna give you some savings. They don't like to do that, but our reps push that when our. They don't like to do that, but our reps push that when our numbers are good. We will see where that happens. Heating fuel decreased, we locked this in already, it was two ninety two, it's now gonna be, we budgeted off the two ninety. Diesel fuel was um, three oh three, it's now gonna be, we locked it at two ninety eight. That always fluctuates, if we see it drop significant enough that we can save some money. Donna and Peter Tanaka and I lock it. Uh, I think we actually locked it in before he left, or before he came in, before Erica left. Electric, electric rates are contractual, that's our rate for supply. We're planning for four, four special ed out of district placements. When we talk about the bulk of this budget, it's need based, student need based, individual student need based. There's a big portion of this budget that's tied to that program. The contractual transportation costs increased by about eighteen thousand, that's contractual. Um, I already mentioned the shared services, we share a lot of services here. Other districts talk about, well, what do you share? We already do a good job with this. We negotiate our fuel together, our mowing and landscaping, the telephone system is done together. Our, all of our benefit stuff is negotiated as one big group. Um, we do a good job here within the town and the school districts, sharing services and making it work. Um. Other places, you know, talk about maybe sharing county to town, we've talked about that with facilities director. You know how hard that is, we've looked at those options for other things. I'm just not sure you get what you need, uh, going outside of, you know, that town and school sharing. And then the unfunded mandates piece is the, the um, piece that I've found is, to be probably the most discouraging as a superintendent. Since I, since I've started this position, the number of pieces of new legislation that come in on an annual basis. That are just re- um, unthought, it's not thoughtful from the standpoint of. There are dollars tied to things without any money coming for. So when we talk about unfunded mandates, the, my superintendent's program said there's over three hundred eighty, this is years old. We have to do deescalate, uh, deescalation training, we have to train a team of teachers in each school, it's required. We have to have that team, well, that costs money, we don't get money for that. We could apply grant money. But we don't get money from the state specifically for that. Teacher evaluation, when they have to, when they have changes in teacher evaluation. And you have to maintain a certain number of administrators to get your evaluations done. I can't ask one person to be a principal of full buildings and do a hundred and fifty evaluations, it won't work. The reporting requirements, the things that I have to spend time on, reporting out on. Attendance, Joe reports, there's no money that comes in, that just goes and sits in a document container, there, it's again, unfunded mandate. Um, we are required to have administrator at a planning and placement, a P P T. So you have to have a people's service director or a principal in those meetings. Well, if you don't have a people's services director and your principal's constantly doing P P Ts, that's all they're gonna do all day long. That's why we have Marcia, to manage that. Um, again, it's expensive, but it's the, it's the best use of personnel to make those things happen. Um, C T Seds is the program we use for now that, for special education, now it's free. But the amount of time that Marcia could say she has spent on that, and uh, you know. We could probably apply eighty percent of her salary in the last two years towards that, it's just, it might, it's been. Across the board, across the districts, it's been a lot of work. D C F reporter training requirement, sexual harassment training requirement, that comes out of our professional development time. And the new legislation around paraprofessional, professional development, we're required to do that. It's not that I'm against it, it's not that I don't think it's important. It's just a requirement now that you have to make sure you have eighteen hours of professional development and prepare professionals. Well, you have to pay them to do that. That's not free, you're not getting money. So there's all sorts of mandates like that, that are in the budget. So between those and the contractual things, your wiggle room of what you can really adjust as a board. Is very small unless it's a significant program that you're willing to change, okay?
Is the state looking at um, C T Seds to improve it?
Um, they've gotten a lot of feedback, but they had all their. Things in a bucket. That was all in, and so they are improving it, they're listening to the feedback, but it's not going anymore. Um, it's, it is what it is.
That's a shame, yeah.
That's easy to do. Um, okay, page eight. So I, I mentioned all the grants, this is just where they're applied. I think it's important to, you know, talk about process, so we not only apply grants, but you know. I question them, I send them constant emails, we have admin meetings. When they submit their budgets to me, I always say, what's this? This math doesn't add up. What is this? You're asking for too much here. The music program would love a, a billion dollars and um, they're amazing, but we can't give them a billion dollars. So those are things that, know that we've already taken some pieces off, all you see in front of you are the grant pieces. Uh, because we don't show you every individual cut that we make as we go along. Um. Again, it would be six percent higher without the grants. Um, and this is a, you know, it's, it's a, a budget that is for needs, it's. Not wants, and so I'm gonna give you some examples, so. Erin Conley, Dr. Conley's Director of Curriculum Instruction, she's been grant funded for three years. I'd love to include her in this budget, she's not in here. She's expensive, because she's an administrator. She's not in this budget, we're still at five point three seven percent, so when I say need versus want. I don't like not including her in here, because I do think we could use another year. It's, it's not there. There's not a single dollar in here for facilities director. I alluded to this, uh, when we were talking about this, about having a high budget. Um, I think it's the right thing to do to put it in here. I could not put in another position for the five point three seven percent increase already. Because if you're putting in another hundred thousand dollars, you're adding a percent. You're six point three seven percent. I already mentioned the things like where we try and save money, Rosetta Stone, instead of having a world language teacher being creative. Paying for Rosetta Stone and paying for paraprofessional to run the program overseeing. Um, you know, the, the speech and language, we have all sorts of examples like that, how we save money. Without sacrificing programs, but again, need based, not want, and I've never presented a budget like this before. The budget that I presented my first year that was high was insurance based. It was, it, it was very, very different. Um, this to me, it's extraordinary, the majority of these items are contractual, uh. You know, from, it's really unprecedented, it's from what I've ever presented to you. Um, this is what I believe, we believe, we need. To continue to promote, promote student success. So I'm gonna show you kinda now get into a program. Um, for center school and, and walk you through, the first one's always the slowest. Paul's school's gonna go faster, because I'm gonna take less time. Um, so when you see these programs, you see the positions, the number of administrators. The teachers are broken out just by, you add those two numbers together. Remember, I talked about a portion of a person, so that's why it's, you can match these up to what's in that back of that document. The secretary, same thing, one point six five here, but there's actually two, the other portion is in. Um, one is in maintenance and operations, and um, one is in transportation. We don't have, and I think this is important, I leave this in here even though it says zero, zero, zero. We don't have any paraprofessionals that are non special education, that are not real specific to something like um, you know, like we do at Hall. That, like, you'll hear in Mansfield, they'll say, well, we have a kindergarten apparel, that's not tied to. A special, uh, you know, an I E P, a student with special education needs. That doesn't exist at center school, we don't have them. We have one staff support specialist, it's in the budget. It has worked out tremendously, Carrie Rainville has been, uh, you know, awesome, uh, filling in for subbing, coverage, whatever we need. Is that a position that I think is really critical to continuing? I do. That's why we put it in. The salaries are tied to the positions above, so that you can see the administrative piece, what the teachers cost you. Notice that the teacher increase is not significant. So sometimes when you say, see flow from year to year, you'll see a big jump or a decrease, and you're like, what happened? Well, as people leave, as new people come in, I might have someone at top step ninety thousand, I might hire someone for fifty five. I'm budgeting based upon our current census, that's what that number is. If I have a top step leave, and you know, someone cheaper come in, I, I save some money, but we won't know that until it happens. You also run the risk, and there are people that pad this line. The reason why is because of the person that's making sixty leaves. And then you open your pool, and you're like, oh my gosh, this person's amazing, I could get a national teacher of the year, but they're ninety thousand dollars. I'm gonna hire that person, and I'm gonna take a thirty thousand dollar hit, and I'm gonna try and find a way to solve that problem within the budget. It's not budgeted for. So, we budget based upon what we know today, okay? Um, the secretarial number's there, the staff support number's there. When you start getting to the purchase services. And, and I wrote contractual next to all the salaries, I probably could do the same thing for purchase services. Because these are all contracts. When we talk about subscriptions, we're talking about like the library uh, program, follet. We're talking about math fact fluency, um. Things that are subscriptions that we have a contract for. Now, you could do away with some of those things, I'm not sure how you operate your, your library. Um, your power school contract is what you use for your student operating system that sends your, all your data to the state. Your copier lease is up, we expect that an increase, we don't know what it's gonna be, so we factored in. An increase, we've been very low over the years with that um, copier lease. So we took in our actual, we were spending, and then factored an increase, Donna and I put in that, that amount. Left telephone, basically the same internet. There's an increase, but we're getting an increase in speed too, so there's an increase there. Postage meter, you have to have it. Uh, disposal services is, has an increase, again, expected. The clubs, we've kept relatively low there, it's a, it's a minor increase. The supplies where you see the big jump here. This is the new curriculum, um. Project based learning, any of the new, you know, units that we're, we're doing. Uh, student consumables are expensive, and that's part of our, our math program. Um. Illustrious math. There is a one time purchase in here for a program that's gonna be coming before the curriculum committee, if we can ever find time to meet. Um, bridges, it's a one time purchase. Uh, it's around seven or eight grand, it's an intervention program tier two, we don't have consistent tier two intervention program for math. That's one thing that is, is in here. Um, that's something where, as I look to continue, as grants expire, if I have funds and I can offset a little bit. I'll use a grant to try and offset that. Uh, I just can't guarantee that yet. The, that is the, the educational supplies too, that's all your paper, pencils. You know, we, I, I really do believe that we shouldn't be sending out, here's the list of things you need to send your child to school with. I don't think it's the right thing to do, uh, I've said that since day one, and I don't allow lists to go out, if I find out about it. Um, they have a conversation, right? And so I really say we should be providing what our students need, and that's where this number comes into effect. Uh, this is all your copier paper, it's everything, so all the supplies are there. P E supplies are, all of those things are in that number. You've got your books, um, they're not really textbooks, it's what they've been called for years, but the media centers, books for the library, any of the periodicals, things like Times for Kid. Uh, when you get into the equipment, that's really Chromebooks and uh, iPads, any replacements. We try and keep some sort of replacement cycle, you know, when you're talking about three or four hundred a pop, it doesn't go far. It does allow us some replacement, and it also allows us parts, so I spent, I think, two thousand dollars at the beginning of this year. Of this money for parts for Chromebooks, so that Novus can repair Chromebooks and keep them going, as opposed to just buying new. We don't put insurance on those because it's just not worth it when you're buying a two hundred fifty dollar Chromebook.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why are we. Leasing copiers but purchasing computers and tablets and stuff? Or did I misunderstand that? It looks like we're spending almost like thirteen grand for copier leasing and maintenance. Versus only five for computers.
So the copiers are all of the copiers that we have, it's your, the main copier at center school is, we have one color copier. It is also your fax machine, um, if anybody faxes any, anywhere these days, they can email and print to it. Um, they're all networked, and then I think there's two copiers that are networked in the copy room. They're all basically a contract that uh, Donna pulls in bids for. And they're all serviced, so we don't pay additional money when their service, something breaks, they come and there's a, a fix it contract. It also includes the cost per copy. So uh, my admin team, if you didn't hear, when, when they walked in today, said, Phil, you made something in color. Uh, because they know I track color copies. And I will send reports out and say, you made eleven thousand color copies this month. Um, I question those things. Now, it, we pay like point, I don't even know what the number is. It's like point zero, zero, seven cents per color copy, it's not a lot. But when you make eleven thousand in a month, it adds up. Um, so we budget to make sure all of that is covered, so it's your, your cost of your copies. And your, your maintenance plan, and to have those network machines, and the fix it time. We lease those, um, my office. Uh, is, even though it's not part of program one, we decided um, to keep our copier. They didn't want it back because it was old, it's networked, it's not colored. But I don't pay any maintenance on it right now, if it breaks, we have to pay for it, so we have a little money budget in there. So we find that we don't print nearly as much as the schools do, it's gotta be up and running and working. Um, whereas the computer portion of it, computers are not leased, we buy the laptops, we buy the Chromebooks, we buy the iPads. Um, and we don't buy insurance for that.
Does Novus take care of our copiers, or is that, there's someone else?
No, someone else, it's the, the company that you get your, your con, your co- uh, your copier contract through.
Oh, I have a question on your computer, hold on.
Yeah.
Do you have a cycle currently going? Do you know when they're all purchased? Do you have a rolling placement or?
I do know when they were all purchased for Chromebooks and for, hello, uh, for Chromebooks and laptops. Um, the good thing is, we have actually spent a lot of the end of the year funds. To keep that cycle going, this year I'm not going to be able to. I'm hoping I don't have to budget next year, not in this cycle, I'm hoping I don't have to budget some more. I have used some refunds to do that, but Novus has basically every item that we have. They have inventory, they have the year it was purchased, and then we cycle through. So, we use quite a bit of COVID funds for Chromebooks. If I have COVID funds left over. And the grant is written a certain way, and there's left, there's a, applies to technology. I may add to someone, increase the cycle now, at the end of this year. As those funds end, but I don't know what the cycle is, but I can tell you that Novus does, and they send me the reports, I can't tell you off the top of my head, no.
Okay, do you have, have any idea what your oldest batch is?
Uh, not old at all, I would say four years maybe. Uh, your la- the staff laptops are maybe two or three years now, I think we're on our third year of our staff laptops. Um, the Chromebooks really depend because we have cycled through, depending on how they break.
Right.
So they, we didn't do them in one fell swoop, we might have done a school in one fell swoop. Uh, but there, it's, I, I mean, I would say, we use COVID funds really to replenish. So I don't think there's much older than three years, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Because twenty twenty, when we bought Chromebooks across the board, same thing with iPads. And iPads are pre K through one.
Right.
So. And those are, I think, last a little bit longer, but they take a lot less abuse.
Well, the, it, it kinda depends on per grade, because what I'm thinking is, your, your Chromebooks and yours, like, seven, then fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Gonna last a little shorter than your center Chromebooks, because they're not gonna be used for as much of a variety of things.
Right.
Um, besides, I, when I, cycle one, whether it's a jumps and first use.
Yeah, when they, Novus basically just tells me, hey, you're, you're down to, you know, they, I don't like to keep things on shelves, and they know that. But if I have something new, it's in hand someplace. Um, they keep parts. So if someone breaks, they might have one or two used Chromebooks to, as a replacement, it's not a new one. Um, but I can find, see if I can get a, a report for you, that'll help me.
We pretty much have computers in every classroom.
All, yes.
At some, in some room.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Uh, I think we're upstairs.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, um, the maintenance there is, the PM tuning is done twice a year. The building maintenance is all your contracts for fire alarms, pest control, emporers in there for preventative maintenance. Fire inspections, uh, septic, all of those are individual contracts. We put an increase on there because there's typically an increase, the challenge is, you know. The challenge is, you know, we're gonna pump a septic in the spring of twenty five, we don't have that number yet. Um so we have to. Basically put a number in there. Uh and so that's what that thirty four thousand.
So the salaries include raises and things like?
Oh yeah, yeah, and then it's contractual, yeah.
And the contract at the end of, I'm assuming you have the percent in mind that's in there?
Yeah, so it's typically been around in in each year of the contract, it was about two point seven five percent. That's what they got each year. So whether they got step movement or they got, and it's, I think they have one more year on their contract. It's around two point seven five percent. So when we take our census, the group of people that we know have said, I'm not leaving. We take their salaries and we go, okay, this is where they're gonna be. They roll it over in the the software that we have. And that's how we calculate our our staffing numbers. The other there is basically just conference travel. There that's contractual. Um for the elementary principal. The, they have a principal supply account that's small amount. It's a couple thousand dollars. She prints her certificates out of that same account for like promotion, things like that. And then dues fees memberships for programs. They have a contractual rate in their contract as well for membership to to program, uh to, you know, it's a. ASCD, you know, supervision um digest, things like that. So you can see the total expenditures. I did something new this year. I put the program percent increase or decrease in. So you can see this program is a three point three eight percent increase. When you factor in your biggest cost, which is your staff. Um at two point seven five, that's not a big increase in the in grand scheme of things. Um again, a lot of the increase on this is the staffing and uh it's curriculum based, to be honest. Questions for Program One?
Yeah, I have a question. I know we're looking at. We're looking at needs, not wants. But I question whether or not we need for in. In a way of special education for schools as far as uh professional skill. Um I know you have a one and a half for for Marsha's area, but. I I spoke with a new uh new person who was hired for Center.
Yeah.
I think she resigned through the grant, right? We had a mentor. Is she the mental services grant hire or was?
She's housed at Hall.
Oh no, there's somebody else then. But I was talking with her and she made a comment that she was wall to wall every day with the work that she had to do and. It's it's no insult on anybody, but when you when you work that hard, you're gonna get burned out. And it it makes it feel that kids might not be getting everything they need when. Someone's working that hard and it almost be of more of a benefit to add some.
Marc was glowing. She's like.
I understand, I understand, I understand another percent increase. I understand it makes you look huge, but. I mean, we have to look at. It, I think that's a need for the kids.
Yeah.
I, you know.
You're gonna see, so Program Three is special ed. You're gonna hear that conversation from us. I literally, I think it was yesterday, maybe two days ago, I don't remember what day it was, March or they funded together. I said. I was looking at the number of special ed. The students that have special ed services and it was in the eighties. And I said, is it really that high? And she said, yes. So when we start talking about like. I think we've done a good job putting a person per grade level. Where we're always trying, we're always trying to save money in that in special ed because it's expensive. And we're trying to get the most out of what we have. And so you're gonna see that. The number of teachers that we have. It's basically one per grade level at Hall. And one for almost every grade level at Center. But sometimes it also depends on program. So I might be running a program. Um for three students, I might have a caseload of three. And the reason my caseload load is three is because I'm running a very specific program based upon a student's IEP. And I'm doing it so that those students are able to stay in district in their home district. And not be outplaced. When that happens, if they do get outplaced, we have to look at programming and because a caseload of two. You start looking at, you know, how do you get the most out of your services? We increase our uh BCBA hours. And again, we'll talk about this when we get to Program Three. It's not in this budget portion for staffing. But it's something that we constantly look at. We're trying to be reasonable with um paraprofessionals. But I can tell you right now, every teacher would love additional support for paraprofessionals. They would love. Because it's, you can run groups, you can support better, but it's it's, there's a dollar impact, right? So we've made a decision. Maybe I've pushed a little bit for this and I I don't wanna say too much more about this just because it's not the program we're on, but. I almost always want to spend more money on a special education teacher. Versus a paraprofession. And the reason why is because if a paraprofessional comes in. And they've got some experience and they take insurance, they're close to sixty grand. Because the cost of insurance and their salary. If I can get a teacher for sixty and they waive benefits. To me, I'd rather have the certified teacher. It doesn't mean the support is not needed for paraprofessionals, but those are things that we wait to. She constantly is looking at caseloads, um looking at caseloads and student needs and schedules. Um but we can definitely talk more about that when it's Program Three.
Well, the only thing I brought up here says you don't, you don't break out in your in your brain out here. You don't bring out special education teachers as far as. Get another program. They're all included. So I figured that.
No, you're gonna see it in three. You're gonna see it in three.
Alright, alright, so I'll save my rant.
Yeah, it's definitely in three. You'll see the number of paraprofessionals in three. You'll see special ed teachers in three and we can tell you that where people are.
Alright.
And that's why we tried to put a two in the on the staff list, the number in each building. We actually, when we wrote, we have a staff list that has names to it, so we can look at the staff list as well.
Okay.
Any other questions about Center?
I have one. I had looked ahead at all, but. I think you said something about reading maybe, but. With the reading curriculum not being approved. And then. There's not that big of an increase in the educational supplies area and I don't know where it come out of. What's the forethought about how that's gonna be changed?
Good question. So we um did not put additional dollars in here for, and it didn't do the new reading program because we have about ninety thousand. The hard thing is, and that's in grants. That's the right to read grant if we, you know, you can you can spend it. On the reading program. The challenge is, we have no concept of what it's gonna cost yet. We don't know if it's gonna be thirty thousand. We don't know if it's gonna be a hundred and fifty thousand. So we're. Right now gathering quotes, we're still evaluating programs, which is why that another reason the curriculum group has gotta meet. Right now, Kristen is trying, who's a literacy coach, is trying to get prices. For a variety of things, like this is the bare bones. Sometimes it's about copies. If you have to make your own copies, it's. It's a ten thousand dollars off. If it's you, you know, you can pay us to make your copies for you. Sometimes that's cheaper and labor wise, it's, you know, you just have to figure those things out. So I didn't put anything in the year. Really hoping that ninety thousand dollars is gonna cover. A K two program. You're upstairs. Uh a K two program. Which is what the grant, or K three program, which is what the grant is supposed to cover. Where it's going to impact your budget is next year. In consumables, um the grant right now doesn't allow us to do anything four through eight or pre K, the way the grant is written. Um and so we're waiting to see if the state pushes out additional dollars from those areas. Because obviously if you. Buy a program, you wanna see. Move all the way through the grades if it makes sense. Well, the programs we're looking at are pre K three through three programs. So what's the impact? The good news is one of the programs we're looking at is, the resources are all online. They're free. So if we didn't get, have enough budget money, we could make our own copies. It doesn't lose any quality because it's free. There are things we would purchase, but that's that's why I didn't put any budget money in. I I'm hoping it's enough. That is what is in the grant right now.
Thank you.
Yep. Move along. Two. So this is basically, I think it's gonna be faster. So you can see that's where Aaron was tied to as administrators, he goes from two to one. The number of teachers there, there's some grant funds that are point four two applied. The secretaries, again, they're at different locations. This is where we've been creative in our use of people. So the paraprofessionals, those are non-special ed. There's three positions. One is in the library, one is helping with intervention, and one is running the world language program. Could you hire a world language teacher? You could try. I don't know if we'd find somebody. Could you hire an intervention, another interventions? You could try. Could you hire a library media specialist? You could try. Shortage area, shortage area, shortage area, basically. You know, minus maybe intervention, but it's. It, I would say right now what we're offering is working. It's going well. I haven't heard otherwise from parents or from admin that this is a mess. Um I think it's working actually quite well. Uh and and honestly, the world language, I think the kids are enjoying. Uh being able to pick their languages and stick with it, so. The staff support specialist is still on there. They do not have one currently. We didn't fill it. I think it's important to leave it on there. It's, this would be a spot where if you were trying to, if the board of finance came back and said you have to cut some funds, they can't tell you what to cut. They can tell you an amount. This is something for me that I would look at. Cutting because there's insurance tied to this as well. But I would also then say, say to the principal dishonest, I would say, well, look, if you need subs, you can hire subs on a regular basis. That would be my kinda go around. There is a budget for subs. It's not as good as what this position would offer, but I think it's important if we're gonna put it in one school, we should try and put it in both. It's again, where the budget's at is hard. So you can see the contractual, again, salaries, admin, teachers. Go right down the list there, paraprofessionals. We added in, the reason the big jump there was because we added in the paraprofessional of the world language. It wasn't that second year, it wasn't like they got some huge raise. Going from sixty thousand to eighty eight thousand. There used to only be two. And now there's three. That's why the big jump. You see this staff support specialist. Purchase services, same thing, subscriptions contractual. Um that's your, the uh uh ten thousand of that is the world language. It's the Rosetta Stone. The rest of it's ballot. You get the inspection for the climbing wall. Power school again, which is what you need. You've got your copier leases and maintenance in there. Telephone, internet, postage meter, all of these things ring a bell. Like they've come through Center School too, same thing. We have this, the piano tuning in this portion of the purchase services. The majority of that is not the piano tune tuning, it's the the uh repairs. And what we found is we have a lot more students and I think this is part um. Music in the arts is, I think, who we used to use. They really ra- raised their rates. And uh we have more students loading instruments from us. Into the show. Uh Rob Cannon, our band teacher in the middle of the concert, had his students in this mid-streak. They literally ran to, literally ran to the band room. Got a fit, an instrument that was fixed, ran back and continued the show. So we have instruments that we're repairing. Um if there's money where, and I tell you, they would ask for a million dollars, like they 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 would use it and they use it well. They would look more in the repair budget. Uh it's because it's, we have to see more and more kids. Doing that, having repaired um instruments versus leasing their own. Uh same thing with, again, with supplies. It's the same reasoning. Um you know, the PBL increase, the increases in the cost of paper, uh the. IM illustrious math, the the, you know, the workbooks that we need. And they were, I think, a little low on the front side of this too. Their educational supplies was a little lower. Um than it should have been. So again, this is all of the instructional supplies. There are some. I would say higher increases on my lines around science where they need some specific supplies for to do a a unit. But to get through an entire year of forty four thousand for all of your supplies, for all of your academic programs is. Pretty frugal. Library has its own um section here that's six thousand that they have in for books. It's one area, in my opinion, that if you were looking to cut a couple thousand dollars, it's not necessarily at halls. I'm not sure what their um student activity account looks like, but I know Center has a couple thousand dollars in their student activities. For just the library books for from the book fairs. That could be something where you could cut a couple thousand dollars. Does it make a grand, a a big difference? It doesn't. So I left it alone. The equipment is the same. It's a little bit higher at at Hall. Uh I I don't look at. The overall, I do get reports on breakage. But typically, uh we prepare more Chromebooks, I think, at Hall, just because it's, they're, you know, middle school students that are using a little bit heavier. And there are some iPads there. You get replacement in there. Your building maintenance, again, is is contractual. So elevator inspection, you gotta do it. It's a contract. The tractor maintenance, we send out to to try and keep it going. We're actually talking about getting rid of this tractor because it's um. Not meeting our needs. Steve would love something better, but just funding wise, it doesn't work. End core contract, the inspections that we have to do. The cleanings, again, it, all of that stuff has to happen. It's contractual. Uh and those are things I asked early on this year. They're already in covered in your current budget. So I did that intentionally because you can't not do those things. You have to take care of your buildings. So there's a, an increase there based upon when those contracts are renewed or negotiated. And uh so there's an increase to forty three four.
I have a question.
Yes.
Excuse me. I missed it in the other school, but um. I mean, forty three grand isn't a lot. Is there any slush in there for other type of building maintenance needs?
It's a different, it's a different program.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, very good question. Program E is building maintenance and. Um that is where the supplies come from, the the thousand dollars for Silk Town roofing to repair something, a boiler repair. That comes out of a different program. Um the sports and extra activities, the stipends that for coaches that are there are contractual. It's contractual rate that's identified in the contract. You notice a big drop in officials. I went back and did, and I I do this typically. This is when we build our budget. I look, have Brenda pull. Three or four years prior and we compare. Now COVID's a little uh funky in there because of. You know, spending. Sometimes I pulled years prior to that. We've never spent more than fifty five hundred dollars on officials. So I dropped that down to fifty five hundred dollars. Um it's not a huge savings, but again, when we look at specifics, that's. You know, that's this type of thing I'm looking for. I can save a little bit a month. Insurance is there. The stipends for extra activity clubs, we boosted. Uh I will say clubs are booming at Hall School. Uh I have a club that was requested today. Uh I think we have a really, really high participation right now. This helps. Offset that cost. This is not the only cost. We also have the grant that's applied. So. I think the increase here is warranted based upon usage. If I see that it's not being used, I, you know. I'm, they know I'm not gonna approve a club for two kids. But when we have a group of kids that are using the, you know, and and we pay the the stipend, it's it's just worth doing. Connected kids do better.
Is busing in here or is that?
Uh it's actually transportation, yep. So the sports equipment, again, really low budget. Uh we tend to, like last year, at the end of the year, we had, when we had some leftover money. We bought a new scoreboard um controller. End of the year money, now to this. So we, sometimes we will do things like that. We just got a really, really nice donation from Wellington Little League. It is now completely gone. They had eight thousand dollars in their accounts. They gave it to Hall School Student Activity Fund and it's going towards softball and baseball. So it has to be split even because of Title Nine. Um which is, it should be anyways, but so. This really will take care of soccer and basketball, the other sports that we have. So. They're set up, but you know, they, if they need new batting keeps, things like that, that's, you know, it was a really good and nice donation. They, this is not big ticket items. This is like, hey, we need some game balls, um things like that. Yes, the sport membership, the after school snacks was um. Was in there as part of our half day stuff. It's now gone because it'll be built into our grants. The conference travel again, contractual principal supply, a little bit higher at Hall simply because she puts on a a. I think it's a little fancier, the promotion ceremony from eighth grade, as it should be. Um she does a nice job with all her certificates and decorations and things. And then she has her principal supplies in there and the dues fees memberships are all in there. Again, total expenditures, you can see the Title One offset of thirty seven thousand, the Title Four offset of seven thousand. That's the clubs, the REAP is sixty eight hundred, that's the supplies. Notice non-lapsing was in there, we can't apply any non-lapse fund to this budget. We uh uh applied over a hundred and fifty thousand last year, that's one of the reasons this budget's up too. So it wasn't in this program, but you can see the the R S, the the offsets, the Resser was Erin, that was her position. So that's why there's no offset this year, um and you can see that she she's at a three point eight five percent increase, three point four, she, all school. And then a three point eight five percent increase. Questions about program two?
Are there ever any grants during the year that we might be able to use?
And we write every single grant that comes along, there's not many that will fund, they don't. And they write these things because I I don't know why people ask, but um they don't necessarily always like positions. And if you do write a position, you have to write to say, I'm gonna fund it for an additional X number of years beyond the end of the grant expiring. Um, and then they also say, don't buy cars. That's like one of the things, it's a lot of grant, don't buy a car. So.
I think we should, you know, still hope for something like that.
I look, but she also knows that I'm realistic and she's gonna have to look for a job, I mean, she's that. As an admin, it doesn't, that's not a, um, in two weeks, I could be here. Uh, the the process to go into administration or, you know, some level job that's equivalent is. Months of interviewing and process, so. Uh, the last program of the night is for transportation, this is a very straightforward program. So you can see that the sec- secretary of support, again, that's uh Brenda and one secretary i- at each school. Is that, that's what that zero point three five is, there's the dollar amount, because we do put a dollar amount tied to it, that's part of their salary. That comes into this, the bus contract is the increase is there is that four sixty nine to four eighty seven. Uh, I did increase the musical events line, they. When they take trips and they're going someplace, the cost, uh uh they're representing us, I think it's just like a sports team. To be honest with you, I, it's the way I look at it, uh and when the cost, we start factoring in cost of fifty five dollars for a student to go to. Some festival, I just, I don't like doing that, so there, this is probably not enough. But it's starting to have an increase, so they can go to a, to a couple things and offset. What is a contracted, like, we have contractual rate with the bus company. It's it's a certain dollar amount, it's in their contract, so we have to use M and J, unless they can't get us a bus, we go someplace else. Which would be even higher, to be honest with you. So I think it's the, it's the right thing to do, I dropped down the sporting event budget. For transportation, because again, I went back to for numerous years. And just between cancellations and things, I felt very comfortable looking at that sixty two hundred dollars instead of seventy five. You can see the after school clubs has a a budget in there, and we did increase it a little bit, and that's based on current usage, sixty eight hundred dollars. The kindergarten orientation and the the center school orientation to hall school, we pay that bus cost. For them to go for a bus ride at kindergarten orientation, and, which is, it's probably highlighted, the kindergarten orientation, honestly, they love it. And then to get fourth graders to hall school, we pay that fee. The um item that we took out, the orientation to E O Smith, it was actually more geared towards, it was uh special education related. And it's really, and it it's, we just left it in the special education budget now, it's it's minor in in the grand scheme of what we spend, if we spend it. Um, so it's not in this program anymore, and diesel, diesel went down because the price of diesel went down, so we have a a an estimated number of gallons. Again, the purpose is here for this program is to get kids to school safely, um to get them home safely. And they go through their procedures, the fact that. We're only seeing a a, you know, a two point two one percent increase in this program is. Pretty good, because there are some districts right now that are seeing double digit increases. Um, we're on a five year contract, I think we're on year three. I'll go look at that. Oh, thank you, perfect. So we've got some time on it. Contractual increase each year, yeah.
Do we provide any transportation to any of the tech schools?
So the transportation for tech schools is falls under um E O Smith. We are only responsible for pre-K through eights. Um, and I think the E O Smith, just to answer it, I think Arthur probably could, or you could, but I think that um. Is this, uh, E O Smith only transports to Wyndham Tech. But we get those phone calls every year, who's responsible for that? We are only a pre-K through eighth grade district. The high school is responsible for determining any transportation that they have for high school students.
Okay, I didn't know, thank you.
Yep, no problem. One, two, and four, three programs.
Students who are opting to go to schools out of this.
Different program.
Do not.
Do not get transportation, back in school, students do not get transportation unless they are fall under some sort of special education um umbrella. And it's, and it would be identified in the IEP. We have uh. Students who are are magnet schools that are in program nine, uh and it's, the number has decreased. Several of them have come back to district.
Did anybody have any other?
So your um. Sorry, I interrupted you. Your next programs next week are special ed. I'm sure you're gonna have, uh, I'm glad where that falls, this, so you have your documents to to go through, and you can get some, you know, read Marcia's write-up, I think that's really important. Um, and read obviously the other write-ups, but it'll really help you kind of figure out what questions you're gonna have about that program. Health services next week should be a pretty much a breeze. Um, curriculum staff development should be fast, utilities should be staff, but fast and fringe honestly, should be relatively fast. I think where we're gonna have to spend some time in special ed, just so you understand it. Just simply because, you know, I mean, the increase in our budget, two hundred, I think it's two hundred ninety thousands uh of it, of the increase is special act. So when you have a four hundred ninety thousand dollar increase in two hundred ninety is special act, and. It is two hundred ninety thousand dollars, we absolutely do not have a decision-making power in. If you are going to remove something, um it's going to be uh out of a different program, I'm just gonna be real blunt with you. So those are the four pro- five programs you'll have next week, we'll start the agenda with questions on programs one, two, and four.
And we can look over these others. In the next week, so that everything we hang thoughts on, and we know you have some questions, we're ready to go.
Correct.
So that next meeting is on Wednesday, January twenty fourth at six P M, just like today. Um, prior to that, um the twenty third is that town meeting, just wanted to make sure to mention that also.
And if you have questions throughout, if you're looking at something and you just need an explanation of something. Feel free to shoot me an email, you don't have to do it here, if it's something that's, you know. Because some of you are brand new to this, you haven't seen this, others have seen my documents before, how I live and how I'm, so if you have questions about something specific, shoot me an email and I'll respond.
All right, great, thank you for all your hard work on that.
It's a team.
It's a lot, thank you all, thank you all, thank you. All right, uh, looks like we're ready for a motion to adjourn. Everybody agrees, say aye. Can we do it that way?
Yep, she said aye.
All right, thank you all, we are.
Thank you guys for coming.